Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 24th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whom I proclaim justice for all.
Kristi, can I have her call, please?
Beerstead.
Here.
York. Carol.
Here.
Dunning.
Here.
Morissette. Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the May 10th meeting.
I move approval of the May 10th meeting minutes. Second.
First and second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Approval of the bills with Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for the payment of bills in the number of $1,245,588.24, subject to comptroller.
Second. First and second, any questions on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything to say, come on up.
Benjamin Fox, F O C H S, 2529 Powell Avenue, P O W E L L. I would like to thank the mayor and the council members that supported, well, yeah, supported his video veto last week on the ARPA funds. Having $1.6 million in city funds to spend on frivolous things is kind of ridiculous. It is not, while you do have these money in the bank, it doesn't mean you should just start spending on frivolous things or little things you found at Target. The dynamics of referrals have changed. As you've seen in the audience tonight, most of these people you did not see three years ago, and these faces may be new to you, and the faces of these people may be new to the people that are in staff. So, I thank the mayor for his financial prudence, and with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who has anything to say? Yep, come on up.
Hello, Linda Vivoda today. I am here to give a statement from PC Grow on their No Mow May campaign. Insects, especially bees, serve a significant and critical role as pollinators of plants, including agricultural plants. The ideal pollinator-friendly habitat is one comprised of mostly native wildflowers, grasses, vines, shrubs, and trees blooming in succession throughout the growing season. The formative period for establishment of pollinator and other insect species, and the many songbirds, and other urban wildlife species that depend upon them occurs in late spring and early summer as they emerge from dormancy and require flowering plants as crucial foraging habitat. No Mow May is a community science initiative that encourages property owners to limit lawn mowing practices during the month of May to provide early-season foraging resources for pollinators that emerge in the spring, especially in urban landscapes when few floral resources are available. This initiative began in England, but in 2020, Appleton, Wisconsin, became the first city in America to formally recognize it by amending their lawn ordinance. Since then, municipal adoption is spreading across Wisconsin into neighboring Michigan, Minnesota, Iowa, and as far as Montana. The city of River Falls could allow interested residents to increase pollinator-friendly habitat by encouraging pollinator-friendly lawn care practices on their own properties for the month of May during this formative period. The city of River Falls could officially recognize No Mow May to actively promote and educate the community about the critical period of pollinator emergence, generation of crucial pollinator-supporting habitat, and early spring foraging opportunities. The city of River Falls could direct staff to not issue correction notices for lawn grass and weed violations for the month of May, permitting all residents to voluntarily delay or reduce lawn care until June, allowing pollinator species to emerge and early flowering grasses and forbs to establish, which may result in ground cover exceeding established ordinance height restrictions. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, is there anybody? Is there anybody else in the audience who has anything to say? Okay.
I had a couple of things, Mayor Tolan. As you all know, this coming weekend is Memorial Day weekend, and it's a weekend that we use for honoring our men and women who died while serving in the United States military. If you've ever, if you ever get the opportunity, which will be, of course, this Monday, our American Legion here puts on a great Memorial Day event at Greenwood Cemetery. This year, they'll be honoring John Chapman, who died back in 1968. And being a young kid at the time, I still just remember how our town, our city was devastated at the time when, when John was killed in Vietnam. But anyway, if you have a chance, take in the event. It's more than worth your time to go to in honoring the men and women who died while serving our, our military. One other thing, Mayor Tolan, if I could. Next month is National Dairy Month, and it's a month that we should be proud of. And here in Wisconsin, being the dairyland of, of, of the America, so, you know, every cow produces six to seven gallons of milk per day. And I have to admit, I drank quite a bit of them, maybe not as much as some of these others, but it's a great month to recognize dairy. And during this, that month of June, there's what's called Dairy Breakfast. And on June 11th, mark it down on your calendar, in Pepin County, there'll be a Town and Country one breakfast. And here in River Falls, on June 18th, for Pierce County, St. Croix County, but Pierce County really, even though it's going to be in Man Valley, which is in St. Croix County, at the UW River Falls College Farm there. So, there'll be a breakfast on June 18th. So, take in part of that, and again, June is National Dairy Month, so be proud of it. That's it.
Perfect. Okay. So, I'm going to close the council hearing up and open up a public hearing on the annual liquor licenses and beer license renewals. Is there anybody in the audience who has anything to say about this? Okay, we will close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, and we will start with, would you like to do here?
Sure. My name is Diane Odine, and I'm, this evening, I'm going to be standing in for Scott Morissette, who had some surgery last night, some complications, so isn't able to ask the questions he usually asks of new agents. So, I'd like to call a few people up, ask the questions, and, and then we can proceed with the rest of license renewals. First for American Legion Post 121, is Robert Johnson here? Mr. Johnson, would you step on up? I have three questions. And a reminder, these questions are, to remind everyone that being an agent is not just a formality. The position includes a lot of responsibility. So, Mr. Johnson, have you completed, successfully completed the Responsible Beverage Server Training Course?
Yes.
Do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
And do you understand that if there is a violation, that you're responsible even if you aren't there?
I understand that, yes.
Thank you very much. Next, for Bold Burger, Brian Sandy. Mr. Sandy, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Have you successfully completed the Responsible Beverage Server Training Course?
I have.
Do you understand the role of being an agent?
I do.
And do you understand that if there's a violation, you're responsible even if you aren't there?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Third for Dollar General, Andrew Kuhn.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Kuhn. Have you successfully completed the Responsible Beverage Server Training Course?
I have.
Do you understand the role of being an agent?
Absolutely.
And do you understand that if there's a violation, you are responsible even if you aren't there?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And finally, for Nutty Squirrel, Robert Comstock. Have you successfully completed the Responsible Beverage Server Course?
I have.
And do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes, I do.
And you understand that even if there's a violation, you're responsible even if you aren't there?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you very much to all the new agents and the agents who are here. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, so, I know they had you sign in at the back. Did we do that? Okay. So, do you, you want me to call off the names of the businesses? Okay. Okay. So, if you want to just raise your hand, let me know you're here. Is there a representative for all these here? Okay. Representative for the American Legion Post 121. Okay, yep. Bob and Steve's, Store Four and Store Six. Okay. Bold Burger, yep, we just seen him. Bro's Sports Bar. Okay. Divine Liquors. Okay. Dick's Hometown Liquor. Dollar General. Emma's Bar. Falls Theater. Family Fresh Market. Holiday Station Store. Johnny's Bar. Junior's Bar and Restaurant. Okay, Quick Trip, Store 301, 455, or I'm sorry, 453. And 101, 1101.
Jeez.
Sorry about that. 1104, holy buckets. Numbers. Lazy River Bar and Grill. Okay. Luigi's Pizza. Mariachi Loco. Mel's Mid-Towner. Nutty Squirrel. Patty's Pub and Boxy House. River Falls Baseball. River Falls Golf Course. Okay. Moose Lodge. Shooter's Pub. Smokey Treats. St. Croix Lanes. Steve's Pizza. Swinging Bridge. Tarnation Tavern. Tattersalls. Walgreens. The Co-op, We Market. And the West Wind Supper Club. Okay, perfect. Thanks, guys. Okay. Next, move on to suggested motions. Suggested motion number one is grant renewals for the Class A beer licenses and Class A cider-only licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. This would include Bob and Steve's Store Number Four, Bob and Steve's Store Number Six, and Holiday Station Stores. And I will take a motion.
So moved. Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to take a moment to encourage people who are already thinking about using, who haven't used them yet, security cameras in their outdoor areas. So, if you're thinking about it, consider taking that step because it will help our city be more secure. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Motion number two would be grant renewals for the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. This would include all these, Divine Liquors, Dollar General, Dick's Hometown Liquor, Family Fresh, Quick Trip Number 301, Quick Trip Number 453, and Quick Trip Number 1104. Walgreens and We Market.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Let's see. Motion number three would be grant renewals for the Class B beer licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. This would include Luigi's Pizza, River Falls Baseball, Smokey Treats BBQ, and Steve's Pizza.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Number four would be grant renewals for the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer licenses, contingent on all licensing requirements being met at the time of issuance. This would include American Legion Post 121, Bold Burger and Club Bold, Bro's Sports Bar and Grill, Emma's Bar, Falls Theater, Johnny's Bar, Junior's Restaurant and Tap House, Swinging Bridge Brewery, Lazy River Bar and Grill, Mariachi Loco, Mel's Mid-Towner, Nutty's Grill, Patty's Pub and Boxy House, River Falls Golf Club, River Falls Moose Lodge, Shooter's Pub, St. Croix Lanes, Tattersall Distilling Company, Tarnation Tavern, and the West Wind Supper Club.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And fifth one is renewal of the Class C wine licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. And this would include the River Falls Baseball Council, Smokey Treats BBQ, and Steve's Pizza.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, thanks. Thanks, guys, for coming in. You can sit and enjoy the rest. It's, don't need to run right off. Hey? Am I all amended to get out? Don't know what they're missing.
Public comment.
Oh!
That's true. There are three people left. I feel like it should be.
Yeah, I think we can make it better.
Oh, jeez. Wow. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Bring that up at our brainstorming session. That sounds like a session.
Okay, let's move on. So, I'll close, I'll close the council hearing up and open up the public hearing in ordinance 2022-03, annexation of land and right-of-way in the town of Troy to the city of River Falls, changing the future land use classification from industrial to high-density residential. Partial identification numbers, PID's, one, or 04-1090-60-000, and 040-190-40-100 at Paulson Road and Radio Road, and applying a temporary zoning classification of R3 multifamily residential high destiny, density. And this is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience who has anything to say about this? Yep, come on up.
Benjamin Fox, 2529 Powell Avenue. Following the city's council's money spent on Engage, F, and Focus River Falls, it's a little interesting that this is kind of hotshot of the tour that when, a week ago, or two weeks ago, you guys were worried about completing the community planning process before you started, you know, approving new subdivisions. I do not have a problem with the R3 designation on the piece south of that, but the piece north of it, I do. The reason being is that during the process, you guys have identified that agriculture uses, walkability and such things in neighborhood feel are important to the city in some of the preliminary numbers. And going out there and putting all these houses out there with no community access to walkability be, you know, there's no convenience stores, there's no local industrial things in there. And the other part is that you're pushing all that development, is going to be pushing down Paulson Road into that intersection there at Sullivan, when you have to question what services up there that are required. It is many of the same problems, it's certainly problems where you have a very residential area with no services, the coffee shops, small businesses, or anything else. So, looking at that, where is the best spots in that interchange to put commercials, neighborhood commercial-type things? So, the part north of that is a lot better access for walkability, safety, and everything else for access to larger trucks and diesel. So, while I have no problem with the, our three designation south of Paulson, north of that may be better as a hobby commercial or neighborhood residential, or commercial. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything?
Good evening. That annexation is next to my place. My name is John Larson. And to me, it's pushing on me, and it come up all of a sudden. I know it's probably been planned forever. But I understand the water tower has to be built, and all the utilities have to go in. And I read in the paper about a roundabout possible. Well, if they keep pushing that many houses in there, a roundabout would probably be at my place. And I'm opposed to that. And if it is done, this whole project, I'd like a berm from my place in front of that whole thing. I don't want to look at it. And if they put any more of these big apartments in, which they probably will there, of course, I don't know. Nobody wants those. I surely don't. You probably wouldn't. None of you would want it at your place. And whatever happens in the future with this, the planning, I haven't heard too much about it, but I like to be well-informed on what goes on there. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything? Yep.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to represent my concerns about the proposal for the annexation. My name is Pat Bilbury, and I live right in town here. Matter of fact, I walked here. I live within walking distance of here, which is one thing I very much love about River Falls. And I'm very concerned about the allocation. That is my primary concern because of the, the fact that, you know, it's located along a busy freeway. And we're trying to encourage River Falls to be more eco-friendly, to be more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly. And I don't see this happening if we keep on pushing, I think developments farther out from the core of the city. And I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Anybody else have anything? Okay, and Emily's, well, I'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, but first Emily's going to give us a presentation on this.
Just to clarify, Mayor, are you closing the public hearing?
Yeah, did I say that?
Well, you said first she's going to give a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. First, first I close the public hearing, and then we're going to open up the council hearing.
All right.
And first, then we'll, before we, for the council discussions and anything more, Emily will give us a presentation.
I'm not sure if this, these screens need to be switched. I'm not sure how to do that.
So, we want to do...
The way we want it. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Shively, the city planner, and I do have a brief presentation regarding the Thompson property annexation petition. So, to begin, a unanimous petition for annexation has been submitted by Mary Thompson, managing member of Thompson Family LLC, for an approximately 43 acres adjacent to Paulson Road and Radio Road, just south of Highway 35. A unanimous petition for annexation is the most straightforward request for annexation with all owners of the property in support of the annexation. Comments have been received from St. Croix County early in the process, and that resulted in a minor change of the annexation boundary to maintain consistency with district supervisor boundaries, and that was right along Radio Road. So, it really didn't affect the property where development would occur. It was just that, going to that center line, Radio Road. The Department of Administration has also reviewed the request and had no substantive comments. The parcels are currently for sale, and the owner has purchase agreements with two different parties, one to develop the parcel on the north side of Paulson Road and one to develop on the south side. Both developers are planning for residential development. There are four factors to consider that are outlined in the ordinance to provide guidance in determining whether to approve an annexation petition. These are guidelines and not requirements that must be met for an annexation to be approved. They are: is the property contiguous to the city? Is the proposed land use compatible with adjacent land uses? What are the capital costs for providing infrastructure to serve the area? And what is the impact on the budget to provide services to the area? So, for the first factor, the answer is yes. The subject properties are contiguous to the city of River Falls along the right-of-way of Paulson Road and Radio Road. Regarding compatibility, currently both parcels are vacant land with some topography at the wooded areas of parcels. The potential developers are anticipating developing the properties for residential uses, as I mentioned, with varying housing types and densities from twin homes to rental townhomes and multifamily apartment buildings. The parcels are adjacent to residential and recreational land uses currently, and residential development is anticipated to be compatible with the surrounding land uses. Regarding capital cost to provide infrastructure to the area, the properties are located where the North Loop Water and Sewer Project is planned. This city project will extend water and sewer along Paulson Road and Radio Road to connect to the Sterling Pond neighborhood. A capital cost study has been prepared that determined the amount of infrastructure costs to be assessed to these specific properties. Those costs are around $312,000 for the water main, $133,000 for sewer main, and $18,000 for curb installation for a total of around $463,000. That would be paid towards the North Loop project costs. The developers have been amenable to paying the entire cost to the city upfront. The annexation agreement would also require easements to be established across the subject properties that are needed for the North Loop extension utilities. And then the last piece, a budget study was prepared by the finance director to determine the effect of the proposed annexation and development on the city budget. The study assumed approximately 310 residential units would be constructed and concluded that the proposed development would add an estimated assessed value of $62 million. The study estimates that the city might collect approximately $380,000 in 2024 if the entire development is completed by January 1st, 2023. It is unlikely that that would be the timeline for completion of the development, but that just kind of gives you an idea of the amount of taxes that would be collected upon completion of the development. The study also concluded that costs for providing services to the development will not exceed revenues generated by the development. This does assume no positions are added for police, fire, or leisure services to serve the development, but at this time, no additional staffing needs are anticipated. If the property is annexed to the city, appropriate land use regulations need to be in place. This includes the future land use classification in the comprehensive plan and a zoning classification. So, while the properties are currently outside the city boundary, the 2005 comprehensive plan, Future Land Use Map, designates these parcels for future industrial development. It may have been assumed at the time that the Whitetail Ridge Corporate Park, which is located further to the southeast along Paulson Road, would continue northwest along Paulson, although the topography and road alignment in that area creates a physical separation between those developable areas in that location. But as I noted previously, the two prospective developers are proposing residential housing on these properties. The developers have done feasibility and market studies to determine the viability of residential development in this location, and have found that there is significant demand for housing in a location proximate to River Falls with excellent access to the highway and site characteristics that are suitable for residential development. In order to proceed with a potential purchase and development of the property, a change in future land use from industrial to residential is needed. In review of a future land use classification, a number of factors are considered similar to the factors for evaluating an annexation request. Infrastructure capacity, physical characteristics of the land and the surrounding context, adjacent land uses, and current and emerging trends and information that impact and inform development decisions. The capital cost study noted that sewer and water infrastructure will be extended through the area, and there is sufficient capacity to serve residential uses in this location. The roadway and circulation network also has sufficient capacity for additional residential development in this area. Access locations will be analyzed when specific development proposals are received, and staff has had preliminary discussions with the developers to convey the city's preference for the number and location of access points to ensure safety and functionality. Also, as noted earlier, the context of the properties is residential, agriculture, agriculture, and the Kilcarney Hills Golf Course to the south. Discussions with the golf course have centered on future residential development in that location, should the course redevelop, and that would be compatible, compatible with proposed residential development to the north. And considering the larger context of land use, it was noted that the current land use designation was applied prior to the city's acquisition, acquisition of the Man Valley property to the southwest, which is planned for over two hundred acres of industrial and corporate park development. Further, there are developable industrial parcels still available in the Sterling Ponds and Whitetail Ridge Corporate Parks in close proximity to the annexation area. In all, there are approximately two hundred and fifty-two acres of industrial land available for development in other areas of River Falls and guiding new businesses to those locations is a priority for the city. Staff also considered the feasibility of commercial development in this location. However, demand for commercial land is down due to a number of factors, as noted by CBRE and referenced in your packet, including e-commerce, the pandemic and increased costs. The comprehensive plan has anticipated commercial development centering on the sixty-five thirty-five interchange in closer proximity to the city center. Given those factors, staff is supportive of changing the future land use designation of the proposed annexation area from industrial to high-density residential to accommodate residential development on the subject parcels. The zoning classification must also be applied to the annexation area when it is brought into city limits. There is no zoning classification currently applied to the parcels as they are located outside of the city's extraterritorial zoning area. Staff is recommending designating the parcels R-three multiple family high-density residence district consistent with the recommended future land use classification to allow for future residential development. In discussion with the developers, staff is anticipating a potential rest, request for planning a development and a zoning classification of R-three provides an appropriate underlying zoning district and flexibility for residential development. So in conclusion, factors to be considered for the proposed annexation are that the area is contiguous with city boundaries. The anticipated future use of the property is considered to be compatible with the surrounding land uses. There will be sufficient infrastructure capacity to serve the development, the costs of which will be borne proportionately by the benefiting properties. And the costs to serve the area are not anticipated to exceed anticipated revenues. The Plan Commission reviewed the annexation request at their meeting on May third and forwarded the request to the council with a favorable recommendation. This evening is the first reading and public hearing on the proposed annexation ordinance, so no action is taken. The next step is the second reading and disposition of the proposed ordinance on June fourteenth. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Emily. Um, so I'll turn over the council. If you have any, council has any questions on this?
Um, I don't know if I have any questions, but I do have comments. I, I, I'm in favor of the annexation of the property, of the two properties, the north and the south, but I'm quite honest, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of the north, um, piece of property, which, a property which is between Paulson and the highway to be R-three. I think that should be commercial property. And, um, and knowing that we have the Man Valley project, we have other, um, development that's going to be happening eventually and we'll need commercial, um, gas stations or whatever to handle those people that are going there. And, um, I, I think it's a mistake. I don't think it's in the vision of, or morally of what we want as a city to have apartments right next to the highway. And, um, so, um, again, I'm in favor of then annexation, but I'm not in favor of, um, both, um, lots being R-three.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Uh, so just for, for the sake of discussion here, Emily, just to help clarify, so between parcel one and parcel two, the way this, uh, study was conducted, we're looking at three hundred and ten units, eighty-six single, twenty-four multi, and then parcel two is looking at two hundred multi. Am I correct in that?
So I can go back to Matt here. Um, so this parcel, uh, right now, the developer is considering around two hundred rental townhomes on that parcel. On this parcel to the south, um, that is where the twin homes would go. And then there may be another developer that would partner to do, um, multifamily on the west side of that parcel.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep.
I just have a comment. Um, thank, uh, thank you for, uh, and staff for all the research on this. Um, I understand people's concerns and I have some of my own, but, um, I, I just wanted to, um, state that, that I'm struggling with how much, um, I mean, this is privately owned property and we have interested people who have done their research and want to do development in it. And so the, um, the, the boundary between, you know, appropriate, um, uh, consideration for private property rights and, uh, kind of pushes up against, um, maybe, uh, some public, greater public concerns. So, um, I will be thinking about that between now and the fourteenth. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I, I just wanted to give, um, some con, con, let's see. I give some context to where staff is at with the project, even if it wasn't necessarily included. You know, there was some discussion at the front end related to the policy question and whether the council wanted to answer that question first, which is, we are not op, the, the council has not instructed us to stop development and wait for the comp plan to be done. Even though we realize we're close to the comp, we feel like we can touch this comp plan, which is going to have more discussion, debate and et cetera about future land use planning. But we are operating as staff, as that the council has not put a moratorium and frankly, hasn't even told us to necessarily, you know, slow way up on development while waiting for this other to develop. We are dealing with a comp or staff is dealing with a comprehensive plan. It's fairly outdated and, and limited even in its coverage of areas that are logically included in the comp plan for expansion of, you know, municipal boundaries. So just for context of what staff is doing, we recognize that council could tell us that they are not comfortable proceeding with development. Um, we would want to know that though, because there's plenty of developers in line asking for staff to give their best estimate of what the community is going to determine for future land use. And in this case, we don't have a future land use that we feel is consistent with the community's vision, industrial. Doesn't appear to be the current vision of the community for that area, even though that's what was set two thousand. So just for context of how they're operating, the council certainly can signal to us, timeout, we don't want to do rezoning, we don't want to do annexations while we're waiting for this plan. That's a very valid policy choice. It's one that has some consequences as far as our ability to, to keep moving with our housing needs assessment, fill, filling the housing needs assessment and other things in the community. So I, I appreciate staff, you know, tactful approach to their providing best estimates of what they believe the community. And then you will be in the same role as a council when this comes in front of you for further development steps. You know, annexation is one of the very first where you'll have to decide, do you have enough information or enough pulse or enough understanding of the pros and cons? Um, and what you are forecasting for future land use to make those decisions. So, um, so when this comes back for second reading, it essentially is the council's opportunity to signal timeout, we want to, we want to hold on. It'll also be your o- opportunity to say, you know what, we have enough information to know we want to do the annexation. But there's some details we want to work out. And then we'll get some information from you. Hopefully at that meeting about what, what details you're concerned about, because recall that a lot of this is staff-driven site plan reviewing. So they'll be having to represent your views and those of the communities when they're doing the discussions about what the development's going to look like. So all the driveways haven't been figured out. All the, the facing of what house is going to go where. The developers may have a pretty solid plan in their mind, but there's still a lot, lot of steps left left to go. But we do move rap, it's, it's fair to say things come up quickly in River Falls and we move rapidly as staff. So it's, um, it's not something that we're planning to, to take a long take on it because we have a few pieces missing. So we would need the council to signal that, um, not necessarily tonight, but certainly when it comes up for second reading. You're not approving the whole project lock, stock and barrel when you do an annexation petition, but you are signaling to developer and to the staff that's working for you. This is at least in the, the realm of possibilities and we'd like it to be even a little stronger than that, that yeah, this looks pretty good. You might have a few reservations on some things, but but by and large you do. And specifically, if you have concerns about that R-three zoning for the, um, the parcel north of Paulson, that's something we'd have to understand as staff so we can represent the community's view on that, because that's not how we're operating currently. So, and I think that was represented pretty well in the presentation today. So, so thanks for indulging me.
Okay.
I, I just want to restate, uh, because I know Mr. Simpson said industrial. Um, and I, and I said commercial, and I just want to make sure that you, you understand that I'm talking about that, um, lot being commercial, not industrial, but commercial. And in, and, um, and I know we move quick and I don't know for sure what the race is that we have to have, um, things um, done and accomplished. I don't know if we're trying to get to a certain population by a certain time, but, um, there's more and more people that are getting worried about, um, what's happening with their, with the, the development of our city. When you look just a short time ago, we were at fifty-six percent of the people in town were, were renters, right? And now we're approaching, it's going to be close to eighty percent by the time we're done with all these developments. And so, um, the, if that's what we want is more people that are not, um, homeowners in our, our community, then, you know, then let's race and keep on going and, and, um, you know, bad out of hell. So let's do it.
Good. Anybody else got anything? Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. Now, we have the following minutes. Historic Preservation Commission from four thirteen, Library Board from four four, River Falls Housing Authority from four thirteen, uh, the Plan Commission Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee Workshop from three twenty-four, Utility Advisory Board from four eighteen, the West Central BioSalads from four twenty-one, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from four twenty. Uh, next is a resolution approving the final plat for Highview Meadows seven addition. Uh, next one is a resolution, uh, referring the undedication of parkland to the Planning Commission. And the last one is a resolution approving the, the specific implement, wow. Try again. This is a resolution approving the specific implementation plan and development agreement for Dawes Place Phase Two. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to pull, uh, quickly on number six, please.
Six, okay. Take a motion on the rest?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items four, A through G, five and seven.
Second.
For a second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, Mr. Carroll, you pulled number six.
Uh, yes, just had a question for staff on the undedication. Um, just how often do we have undedications in recent history?
I'm, I'm not aware of one in recent history. Um, this is some remnant of the fact that this was a master planned residential community and they kind of put all the parkland in one spot. Um, and then of course we've ended up developing, you know, a, a third of the housing units that were proposed. And then if you look at the future land use map that Emily, uh, city planner just had, uh, up online, um, this would more align with that kind of future land use plan. So it's, it's very uncommon and it's something we should all pay attention to and determine it where we think it's, makes sense to go forward with.
Thanks for the context there.
Take a motion on that then?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and motion that we approve consent agenda number eight and six, please.
Second.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, uh, alright, next be, uh, resolution approving West Central Wisconsin BioSalads contract extension recommendation. And I'll take a motion on that.
I move approval of the resolution approving West Central Wisconsin BioSalad contract extension. Second.
First and second, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Comments? Yep.
Just quick context, if you're interested in more information on this, um, it was presented at the Utility Advisory Board. Um, so there is, there is video of that. Um, it's not a decision that staff takes lightly. We obviously have talked about this for, for, uh, some time. Um, but recommending approval of this does indicate that the city council is prepared to move forward with, uh, our own facility. We would be notifying, uh, West Central BioSalads that will not renew the contract at the end of its term.
Okay. Um, first and second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, next is comptroller's report.
Uh, the comptroller's report for April twenty twenty-two. General fund revenues through the end of April were four million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand fifty-four dollars, or thirty-nine percent of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in April included twenty-five thousand dollars for an urban forestry DNR grant, eleven thousand twenty-eight dollars in building permit fees and ten thousand seventy-three dollars in recreation program fees. Year-to-date expenditures through the end of April were three million three hundred and nine thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, or twenty-eight percent of total budgeted expenditures for the year. So as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, revenues in excess of expenditures were one million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Thank you. Uh, I just have a proclamation I'd like to read. Uh, this is a recognition of Pride Month two hu- two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the City River Falls strives to be an inclusive community and employer of choice as part of our efforts to be a distinct, vibrant and safe place for people at different backgrounds to call home. And whereas in two thousand and seven, the city council resolved to make inclusive, inclusiveness a fundamental aspect and everyday priority of our community. And whereas the month of June has been recognized as Pride Month throughout the nation since nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and is an opportunity to engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliance and continually build understanding and acceptance. And whereas the City River Falls is honoring Pride Month to support, recognize and celebrate the contributions and diversity of the LGBTQ members of our community. Now therefore, I Dan Tolan, Mayor of the City River Falls, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty-two to be Pride Month in the City River Falls and authorize a pride flag to be flown in city hall during the month as a sign of our commitment to celebrating diversity and prioritizing inclusivity. Given under my hand and seal of the City River Falls this twenty-fourth day of May, twenty twenty-two. Okay. Next, a recession, a closed session, pro Escates, Wisconsin State Statue nineteen point eight five, uh, one E for the following purposes. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business.